I want the chairman.
Okay.
She'll be the only one to read.
She's the CEO of Mojave County.
Okay, alright, so you'll, the chairman's gonna acknowledge you. So the other two will not read theirs?
No.
She will just read.
We'll call the meeting to order if you'll all please rise for the invocation by Supervisor Watson and the pledge allegiance by Supervisor Sockwell.
Heavenly Father, may we take a moment to reflect on the people who have served our nation and all those who are doing so today. Bless them, who so unselfishly sacrificed their time, their lives, that we may enjoy freedom. We ask to continue to keep this nation under your care and provide a clear envision of your tolerance. Guide us, guide this board in the decisions before us today. Amen.
Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Committee or legislative reports Supervisor Sockwell, you have anything?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Watson. Manager Walker.
Mr. Chairman, we have maybe five minutes or so, I'd like to ask Travis Lingan Filter to come up. Give a little overview of some of the things that we're, we're doing in economic development. About our website, we have like our land, kind of a land bank, kind of an issue that he can talk to us about. Travis?
Good morning Supervisors. If I could get onto the economic development site here, I just, won't take a lot of your time, but I'd like to showcase our site here. Our site basically allows us to present all that Mojave County has to offer in a professional manner. And if you compare our site and the content that we have here in Mojave County, I would compare it, it's, it's on the level of GPEK down in the valley. They're an urban county and they have far more money and resources than we do. Or even Trio down, down in the Tucson area, but if you look at rural counties in Arizona, ours is probably by far the best rural economic development website that we have for a county. So, we're proud of that. The audience that we're really targeting is corporate site selectors and business representatives. And what we've done is we've wrapped the website around all of our target industries, which are distribution, warehousing, logistics, manufacturing, energy industry, obviously we're very strong in that industry here in the state. Healthcare, healthcare services, excuse me, and tourism. And I'll just touch on just a few things that our site does that no other site in northern Arizona provides. One of those being our site selection services. As the county manager was talking about, we offer a tool called Mojave Insight, which basically is, is a smart GIS-based site selection tool for corporate site selectors. It provides the ability to identify and analyze available commercial and industrial buildings and properties within the county. You can screen those by size, location, price, zoning, address, and more with a simple click of a mouse. This is the same tool that the urban counties use as well, GPEK and Trio. And we're proud to say that we're partnered with Wardex here, which is the MLS in Mojave County. We negotiated a free data sync, it's nightly synced to their commercial properties. So all of the, the properties that are entered into the Wardex site here in Mojave County, they're synced to our site on a nightly basis. So, just to give an example, if you were to go to, let's say, commercial buildings, and we'll just say Kingdom because we're in Kingdom, and click search, it's a very general search. And I'll just show you kind of what we offer, it's pretty impressive. So it basically says, here are the properties that are found. It's, it's, all of the, the, the commercial properties and sites that are available in Mojave County at the current time. And it's always staying current because it's synced with Wardex. If it's something that's taken out of Wardex, if it's sold, if it's leased, that comes out of Wardex, that night it's synced and it's taken out of our site as well. So we're happy to offer that to the site selectors and the business community. Also the Mojave Data Center, I'd like to show you that. This is something that I'm personally very proud of. We, by far, we offer the most comprehensive data on Mojave County economic development in, in the whole region. We have our data center here, which I'd like to show you. Basically, we're the only agency in northern Arizona to offer all of the IEDC, which is the International Economic Development Council, the data standards. We're the only agency in, in northern Arizona, excuse me, to offer these data standard sheets. It's basically the way that site selectors do an apples-to-apples comparison when they're going through their site selection process. So we, we include those and we're keeping those updated every year from Mojave County, so we can be included in those site selection searches. See if I can, I don't want to take up too much of your time here. We also are the only agency to offer economic development maps. We offer a series of seven different economic development maps for those that may not be familiar with Mojave County and what we have to offer. Those maps include our transportation infrastructure, drive times within the radius of 500 miles. Industrial parks, we spotlight all of the industrial parks in the county. Our major industries, we spotlight some of the major industries that we have in the county and where those are located. For those that may not be familiar with us, we give a regional cost of living to show how competitive we are in that area. Education, we spotlight all of our educational resources in the county. And then tourism and recreation, we spotlight just a few of the, of the singular things that our area is able to offer. That makes us a good place to locate and offer that work-life balance that so many people seek. Something else that we offer, and I'll sum it up here. If you go down to leading and featured employers, just to demonstrate to corporate site selectors and business representatives that Mojave County is indeed a great place to set up shop and do business. What we've done is we've gone and we've spotlighted some of the county's leading featured employers. Many people that live in the county and may not be aware that we have so many outstanding businesses here. International businesses, Sterilite Corporation, they're in Havasu. They are the world's largest manufacturer of plastic kitchenware, tableware, and housewares, and they operate out of Havasu. We have the Chrysler and Harley-Davidson Arizona Proving Grounds at Yucca. That's a vehicle test facility, they took that over from Ford Motor Company in 2007. And since that time, they've really attempted to maximize what they can do at that site through partnership agreements and things like this. American Woodmark Corporation, they're the, they're a leading manufacturer and distributor of kitchen and bath cabinets for the remodeling and new home construction markets. They've been in business here in Kingdom for 25 years, and they're currently planning their 25th anniversary celebration of the plant in June. Guardian Fiberglass, they manufacture a complete line of light-density fiberglass building products. They're sold under private brand names including Do-It-Best and Meeks. Cascades Tissue, we're proud of them, they're in Kingdom. It's a Canadian company, they specialize in the manufacturing of recycled paper products, napkins, paper towels, paper plates, things like that. They're soon to be affiliated with the Kirkland brand, many people are familiar with that. And I'm proud to tell you that the plant here in Kingdom, out of all of their tissue group, has been the most profitable plant for the last three years running. And they're starting to get international attention because of that, so we're proud of them. There's many, many more here, McKee Foods, most people know them by their Little Debbie snack cakes. They're available in the United States, Canada, Mexico, and on military bases around the world. I mean, there's so much information on this site that it's hard to spotlight it all in five minutes, but, I mean, we have tabs here for business services for businesses that are already here. We have tabs for workforce training, we spotlight all of the educational offerings that we have. And then we have a pretty extensive live and play section on our site to show that not only is it a good place to do business, that, that you can, you can save a whole bunch of money and be very profitable here, but there's a lot to do here as well. So, with that, I would open it to questions and thank you for your time.
Thanks Travis. Mr. Chairman, it's clear that a lot of people think that economic development is only about trying to attract new business. And you can see we're focusing on trying to attract new business. I know, Mr. Chairman, you've sat through many meetings with site selectors about what they're looking for, as have I, where we had to go and try to find information to satisfy their needs, we can do that usually upfront now. The other thing that all these businesses we're talking about, we've got a business-to-business program where economic development has gone out and actually interviewed most of the, the businesses in Mojave County, particularly the ones we're talking about here, about why they're here. What, what can we do for them to try to make this a better environment for them? And it's led to a lot of the issues of our cooperation on workforce development, sorts of things. So, we're, we're working hard to see when, when the curve comes back, that we're, we're gonna try to be at the front of it. So, I'm very proud of what they're doing.
Thank you Manager Walker and Mr. Lingan Filter. Need a motion for approval of the March 12th, April 2nd, April 10th, and April 30th, 2012 Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a proclamation for Mental Health Month, May 2012, is Don Abbott here too? Do I also need to bring up a Dr. Rhonda Alsbrook, Alsobrook? Oh, okay. Go right ahead, please.
Thank you and good morning, welcome. Southwest Behavioral Health actually initiated this proclamation. And we're very happy to be included in its presentation and are very appreciative of, of the Board of Supervisors' consideration and acceptance of this proclamation. Shall we read it together or? Go ahead. Okay. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas, mental illness affects one in five Americans, regardless of race, creed, age, or economic status. And whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas, with proper diagnosis and treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead fulfilling and productive lives. And whereas, community-based services that respond to individual and family needs are beneficial to consumers and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors does proclaim hereby, May 2012, as Mental Health Month. And calls upon the citizens, public, and private institutions to recognize the importance of mental health and commit to increasing awareness, understand, and understanding of mental illness.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, you're representing Mojave Mental Health and Southwest Behavioral Services, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm with Southwest.
Thank you.
Flash never goes when you're. I know. Thank you. Alright, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held June 4th, 2012 at 9:00 AM.
So moved.
Second, second motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. We now have a presentation of our storm-ready certification by the National Weather Service to Mojave County, Mr. Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Mojave County Emergency Management and the Flood Control District embarked in a self-motivated program to apply for the National Weather Service Storm Ready Certification. And in that process, we have improved our communication, infrastructure, weather monitoring capabilities, first responder training, citizen training, developed and updated the County Emergency Operations and Response Plan, incident management practices, and operational standards. In recognition of Mojave County's preparedness and ability to monitor changing weather conditions and to provide emergency warning to public safety agencies, the National Waters, Weather Service has recognized and awarded the County the Storm Ready Certification. With that, Mojave County is among only five Arizona Canis with this recognition. And following a brief presentation by the representative of the National Weather Service, I want to ask the Chairman to accept a Storm Ready Certification for Mojave County.
Chairman Johnson and the rest of the board, I just want to say congratulations. This is a long process, it takes typically anywhere from six months to a year to complete. And your county has worked very, very hard to make sure that all the citizens in the county are safe. It doesn't matter if it's just weather, by improving your storm-ready, you're computing, improving your communications and your ability to get message out. So it could be any kind of natural hazard also. So I just want to say congratulations, your county has worked very, very hard on this. On behalf of the National Weather Service Office from Las Vegas that forecast for this area, I want to say congratulations. I have a certificate for you guys. And also some signs, and if I could get all or one of you guys to come down, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
And for those who don't know, the, the early warning system we have also in some locations tells us the temperatures that are on the roads and also the moisture that's on the road. So we're combining services with the Road Department and the Flood Control Department to give better early warning on potential hazards that are coming up. The next item will be our consent, items five through 71. Supervisor Watson, is there anything you'd like to pull off?
I've got a request for number 44.
Supervisor Sockwell, is there anything you'd like?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
We'll add 11, 37, and 39, so I need a motion to approve items five through 71, minus 11, 37, 39, and 44.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. First one is item number 11 to have a motion for discussion.
So moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Second. I guess the, the lady signed up, Cherie Dillon? Would you like to come up? I understand what your question is, you thought you were getting three years and we're giving you two years. That's your question?
Kind of.
Okay, is there something else?
Um, I just wanted to speak in case you had any questions with all the things going on with the rescues.
Oh.
So I thought if you had any questions, but the planning and zoning had said that they would put in for the three-year, and then the resolution was written as two. So I was just wondering if you guys could make the change, if not, not a big deal.
Alright, did the, Manager Walker, do you know if this went through the PNC as a two-year or a three-year?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to.
If you were on the original, it said three, but, but everything we got says that it was approved at two.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the applicant did request three years. The commission's typical extension of time was two years, so all the paperwork did go in for two years. We did mention to the commission at the time during the meeting that the applicant had requested three years and the department did not object.
Alright, thank you, and, and Ms. Ballard, does the board have a discretion to change? I know we can change timelines down, but to go more, would it have to go back to Public Works, I mean to planning and zoning?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, not in this case.
Okay, thank you. Are, are there any questions of the board members of?
No.
This ma'am, I, I know you have in the past, you've been in front of us, I believe, three times previously, and each time you have increased the number of animals that you have out there because of the stellar record you have, and we have no complaints from environmental health or planning and zoning or anybody else, so you're doing a really good job. I, I kinda leaked leaving it two years, but Ms. Ballard, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify that there's nothing keeping the board from giving the applicant three years if that's the direction you want to go.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could inquire, we've had a lot of conflict over the kennels and have you had any significant difficulty in meeting the requirements? It does not seem that you have, you've been here before, we've met them, you're here today, having been through planning and zoning and to have met them all, has that been a burden upon you?
No, it hasn't. I, I, I think it's a lot in your planning, and I'm not saying it's not a struggle, because it is. And with donations down because of the economic hard times, donations are down, but still we have some people that stick with us and make sure, you know, that they're contributing constantly to us. We're having our fundraisers, we're doing everything possible, and we're making improvements as they're needed. But as far as meeting the requirements of the county, no, we have not had a problem, none.
And you started at, what, 20 dogs, and then now what are you permitted for?
We're permitted for 60, which is our capacity, that's pretty much what we can handle on a day-to-day basis. And even though we have the area for more, if we wanted to put in more kennels or whatever, that's all that we can take care of. What do I want to say? We can take care of them comfortably and not putting, when you get too many animals, then their quality of life goes down. Not to mention you're spreading yourself very thin. So, the 60 dogs and the 120 cats is what we're permitted for, and that's pretty much what we run all the time. Maybe a few over here and there if an animal comes back or something like that. But, that's what we can handle, that's our capacity and we realize that, and so we stay within it.
Alright, is there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you ma'am. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to renewal. And because of the applicant's stellar history with Mojave County and doing such a wonderful job, I'd like to recommend that we give her three years.
Second motion.
Motion and a second, no further discussion, if you got that Barbara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number 37 I pulled off, I would make a motion for discussion.
Second.
I'd like to go over, this is the contract that we had before, that was for what, $200 and some thousand?
I'm not exactly sure on what we're actually paying right now. I know that the reason that we determined to go back out to bid at this time was to try and reduce those annual maintenance and support fees, and in addition to add new functionality that the assessor's office was requesting.
Mr. Chairman, I think it, John, correct me, $276,000? That, that's, that's what was being paid, so we re, we rebid this and so we've got a cost reduction.
Alright, and it ends with the same company, we went back and renegotiated with the same company.
Yes, that is correct, it's with Colorado Custom Ware out of Colorado.
Mr. Chairman, to be, to be clear, we recompeted this contract, we opened this contract up. They had to rebid and recompete for the contract, so we didn't just negotiate with, with one company.
So we're out the bid and you were able to cut that much off of it, that's, that's all I was just wanting to make sure with the same company and that that was the contract that was redone, and I had no other questions. I don't know if the other board members did or not. That's a good savings and we appreciate your.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve item 37.
Second the motion.
A motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. I pull item 39, I'd make a motion for discussion.
So moved.
Alright, my question will be of the, of Manager Walker. We're going through and approving a cooperative procurement agreement with Bullhead City Procurement Code, so they'll be piggybacking off ours?
That, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. Annie, you want to tell us a little bit about what we do? We, we routinely do this, we have joined with others, this allows Bullhead City or others who do an agreement with us, if we have already gone out, done the bidding process, and have vendors on the list, that they can come here without, without having to go out for an individual bid. Why, why is this one back? Didn't we already have an agreement with them?
Actually, there was an agreement that was drawn up back in, I believe it was 2005, and it was signed by the former procurement manager. But on their behalf, they had one of their procurement officers that signed it, and according to the mayor, he does not have the authority to be able to do that for the city of Bullhead. So they were the ones that requested that we have a new document drawn up and, and signed.
I understand now. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Manager Walker?
No, no sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve 39.
Second the motion.
A motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number 44, Supervisor Watson.
I had a request from constituents.
Mr. Stephen Robinson like to address this issue?
Yeah, number 44.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion on the floor.
Alright.
Motion for discussion.
Second motion.
A motion and a second, Mr. Robinson.
Chairman Watts, Johnson, members of the board, good morning, my name is Steve Robin. Chairman Watts... Johnson, members of the board, good morning. My name is Steve Robinson. I'm at thirty-four thirty-nine North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. I researched this because whenever you have a sole source procurement, the question is, is it fairly competed? And as I did my research, I found out, to the credit of the Golden Valley Improvement District, that this bay oxide E33 is the very best industry standard. And so I thought that that was good, that they do need this for the work of cleaning up the arsenic in well number two. I also found out that Severn Trent is the exclusive importer for this product. I did find out, however, that there was two companies eligible to distribute the product, and both of them have sold products in Arizona. The first one, of course, is Hennessy, which was only incorporated or organized as an LLC last May twentieth. And the other one is Ad Edge Technologies out of Georgia. And I spoke to their sales rep, Eric, and he said that they have sold the product in the state of Arizona to both municipalities and other sources. So my thought was, before we approve the good work of Terra Acton, that we do at least investigate the price and see if maybe this Ad Edge Technologies can also possibly beat the price. That was my only reason for bringing this up today.
Thank you. Any questions?
No question. Thanks, Mr. Robinson.
Are there any questions, the board members?
Yes, I have a question.
Supervisor Watson?
If we could have procurement explain, possibly. You know, there are many times, Mr. Chairman, where we put items out for requests that, you know, many people just aren't aware, so.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, Annie, if we look at, why did we do sole source? And what is the process by which we do sole source?
Actually, this was requested by the department, the Golden Valley Improvement District, and the procurement staff had then researched it based on their sole source determination to verify that there was only one supplier for this. And we came up with that conclusion because when you purchase it from the distributor, it has to be through their assigned agent. And according to that company, the assigned agent is Hennessy.
And we should also add, we do the best qualified. If there's no other person that's qualified to provide the service, and sole source is the most efficient, effective way, that's the only way we bring it back to the board.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I have, understanding the situation with exclusive rights and whatnot, I'll accept it.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the...
Second.
Motion is second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number seventy-two is a public hearing. Adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution is twenty-twelve dash oh seven oh. I will open the public hearing. I do have people that are signed up. I'll start with, I believe, Diana Delk. And please state your name and address when you get up for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Delk. My address, excuse me, is thirty-three seventy-three Latrobe Drive in Lake Havasu. That's at the Refuge. And I just wanted to state that we've been there at the Refuge since the beginning. We were one of the first people to move in. We saw the previous golf course go bankrupt or go out of business, and the Aldriches purchased it. They've been doing a lot of good things with the property. They have a lot of great ideas, and we are behind them a hundred percent. My husband was the first HOA president, and so he was pretty knowledgeable about all the things that were happening. And we have no objection to you issuing them the permits to continue with their project.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Delk, do you want to speak also? You signed up in favor. Judy Selberg.
My name is Judy Selberg. I live at thirty-six ninety-eight Winifred Drive in the Refuge, Lake Havasu City, Arizona. Good morning, Chairman Johnson and supervisors and the county staff. My husband and I are full-time residents in the Refuge and members in good standing of the Refuge Community Association. Currently, I serve as the elected representative of the Governing Board of Mojave Community College District One, as a director on the Lake Havasu Convention and Visitors Bureau, and as a director of the Havasu Community Health Foundation. I'm the field supervisor for the training of student teachers for Northern Arizona University and Grand Canyon University. I'm proud to serve in all of these aspects for my communities. The planning and zoning hearing room was filled with people who supported the Refuge Golf and Country Club when the commissioners unanimously approved the request for the technical review of the recreational vehicle park plan and approval of the petition of exception for a small portion of the Refuge Golf and Country Club. We are here again today and will be grateful for your approval also. This park will bring jobs to the area and help sustain the financial stability of the club. This plan is a positive step in bringing additional jobs and revenue to the entire county. The club now employs forty-seven people, and as expansion moves forward, another thirty jobs will be created. This visionary quality project will enhance our image, draw additional sources of revenue to the county, and provide a stabilizing effect for our refuge community and our subdivision. It will bring critical support for reestablishing home and property values within the subdivision. This is evident from the numbers of new buyers who have become members and supporters of the Golf and Country Club. The plans for expansion of the clubhouse and unique spaces for entertainment and conferences, special occasions, and more have brought people from all over the country and the county to this beautiful area. These full-time residents, visitors, and part-time residents will enable industries, businesses, and services to grow and prosper. Critical also is its role in bringing new enterprises to this area. Please support the Aldriches' request for evaluation of a portion of their property. It is a critical piece to the future growth and development of the property itself and to the surrounding areas, including our residential subdivision. If you have questions or concerns, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jerry Aldridge?
Jerry Aldridge, forty forty-one Vega Drive, Lake Havasu City. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. As the largest property owner in the complex known as the Refuge, Cindy and I own one hundred and seventy acres of property there and two dozen residential lots. It's paramount to us that the golf course be successful, and it's paramount to us also that our home lots increase in value. And the only way for the residential property to stabilize and increase in value is to have a successful Golf and Country Club. Cindy and I are dedicated to making it a successful Golf and Country Club. We purchased this commercial property zoned for our specific intended use to do exactly what we're doing, which is to build a destination resort, a motor coach resort on eight of our one hundred and seventy acres. And we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Daniel Barr. I live at twenty-nine oh one North Central in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm the attorney for the applicants here today, and the only reason I'm here is to answer any questions if the board has any concerning the litigation that's been going on in this matter. If not, then, you know, I'll sit down. I do want to say that while I disagree with the positions taken by the homeowners here, I think it cannot be argued that they have been thorough in presenting all the arguments and all the claims that they believe to be relevant, first to county staff and then to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think it also is undisputed that county staff did incredibly thorough job in going over this application. I don't think there are any unanswered questions, and that for the same reasons that county staff recommended that this project be approved and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it, this board should approve it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything after the public testimony, we'll call you back up.
Good morning. My name is Linda Seaver. My husband and I built a home at the Refuge in two thousand and four. At that time, we became full-time golf members, so we're really, really interested in the golf course. We do support the Aldriches and everything that the Aldriches have done to enhance our living environment out at the Refuge, and we hope that you'll support them also.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Don Clark. I live at forty-one hundred Bison Boulevard, Lake Havasu City, Arizona. I'm totally in favor of this project, and I hope that you will be too. As a real estate professional, I can say that with absolute certainty that this golf course and country club is critical to the values of the property there. Anyone in the beginning who bought property at the Refuge Golf and Country Club bought it because there's a golf course there. And I think any future buyers or potential clients will be doing that because there's a golf course and country club there. And there's a real possibility that without this phase of the project, there would be no golf course there. So it is, in my opinion, that in order to maintain and increase the values and to create jobs and to create more tax money for the county, which we all know that you could use and put to very good use, I think it's absolutely critical that this project go forward with this phase of the operation, and hope that you will support that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Supervisor Sockwell, Mr. Chairman Johnson, and Supervisor Watson, and Manager Walker, and Chris Ballard. We have a brief presentation for you for the opposition, the homeowners, to the Refuge RV Park Plan. My name is Monica Ball. My address is nineteen forty-six Tradition Lane, Lake Havasu City. My husband, John, and I have owned in Mojave County for twelve years. We bought and built in the Refuge in two thousand and four. The Refuge is a three hundred and fifty-home gated community originally approved in two thousand and two and built with an Arnold Palmer signature golf course. We are just north of Lake Havasu City limit in the Desert Hills area of Mojave County. Homeowners of the Refuge overwhelmingly oppose the plan to convert the west portion of our golf course into an RV park inside of our community. We have a quick presentation we'll call the Three Es, covering the exceptions you're being asked to approve, the economic realities, and the unnecessary exposure the approval of this plan would mean for the county, a brief history of the Refuge and why we are here today. Nineteen eighty-four, the land for the Refuge was deeded from the Department of Interior. Two thousand and one, Arnold Palmer agreed to build and design the golf course. In two thousand and two, five county resolutions and the final plat were adopted to create the Refuge. In two thousand and nine, the applicant purchased the golf course, announced the RV plan to the homeowners, who tried to reach a compromise with him but were rebuffed. And in two thousand and ten, the applicant applied for the first RV plan at the county. He failed to finish the process here, then attempted Lake Havasu City annexation in two thousand and eleven. The HOA opposed the annexation with a successful referendum, and Lake Havasu City voters defeated that at the ballot box by sixty percent. Two thousand and twelve, the golf course owner reapplies to the county for the RV plan that won't go away. And here we are. So we have major concerns about the irregularities of the approval process for this plan thus far, the violations to our community that it would represent, and the misleading advice county officials seem to be receiving accidentally or intentionally from their county manager and deputy county attorney in an apparent attempt to push this forward. So if anybody has any questions so far, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we're going to answer three of the most commonly asked questions right now. I think Jonathan Seltzer is your next
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Jonathan Seltzer?
My name is Jonathan Seltzer. I live at three-three eight-seven Latrobe in the Refuge. I have a business degree in real estate development. I have owned multiple properties in Mojave County since two thousand and two, bought and built in the Refuge in two thousand and three. And I'll try and answer several questions that seem to come up frequently. Why didn't the homeowners buy the golf course in two thousand and ten? We tried, along with several other buyers, but were outbid by double the amount because the applicant probably thought he was going to do a new subdivision. Could the HOA successfully run the golf course if the ownership changed? Yes, we have investors and a very good management company that runs thirty other courses nationally and are ready to go. How many homeowners are really in favor of the RV plan? There are about ten couples out of the two hundred and eighty-nine owners of the three hundred and fifty lots that support the applicant, less than ten percent, and one of them who's basically on the payroll of the applicant just spoke. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brian Thines?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Thienis. I own a civil engineering company in La Mirada, California. I've done this for twenty-five years. This is what I do for a living. I wanted to make sure that you're perfectly clear about the proposal before you. There's a statement on the lower left-hand corner of the site plan that you're here to approve that says, "Existing golf course will remain one hundred percent functional. No holes will be removed due to the proposed RV park, and RV spaces will not interfere with golf course use." Golf hole number two will be almost entirely eliminated. Hole number four will be eliminated. Hole number seven will be eliminated, and hole number eight will be cut in half. It is certainly not what we bought into. I don't think that the staff fully understood the risk of presenting this resolution that is so destructive to our community. The Board of Supervisors Resolution that approved the original subdivision has condition number five, which states, "Lots and parcels within the recorded final plat for the Refuge at Lake Havasu will not be further divided." Adding RV spaces for the golf course for lease is clearly dividing the property. This is not what we bought into. The current proposal clearly divides the property. The definition of golf course is for the playing of golf. That was what the intended use of these parcels was for, for golf course. The spirit of the intent of resolution in two thousand and two was clearly reflected in two thousand and seven, when the original developers sought to subdivide parcel G. They asked to remove the word parcels from condition number five to allow them to subdivide parcel G. Well, the supervisors took action and said, instead, "This is in your resolution. This is written in your resolution. The ability to split any and all parcels would not be in the best interest of the subdivision residents who bought into the concept as well as a physical location." Condition number five in the two thousand and seven resolution clearly substantiates our claim that the resolutions that you passed in two thousand and two was to protect our rights as property owners. Arizona Proposition two oh seven, the Arizona Homeowners Protection Act of two thousand and six, provides a property owner is entitled to just compensation... owner is entitled to just compensation if the value of a person's property is reduced by the enactment of a land use law. A land use law is defined by the law that regulates the use of a division of land. Allowing this resolution to go forward clearly is in violation of the resolution set in 2002, supported in 2007, that was intended to protect my rights. I wish that you guys, or that the, I wish that the supervisors would continue this proposal until they seek outside counsel and fully understand how the resolutions in Proposition 207 can gravely affect the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ellen Loray Bill?
Graybill. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Ellen Graybill. I own a lot on Tradition Lane in the Refuge. The Aldridge Plan is both detrimental to the public welfare and injurious to the property owners adjacent to the proposed RV park. There is a disregard for the AO2 designation for floodplain planning. The destruction of the drainage plan will not protect the public health, safety, or welfare. The applicant's plan is a major alteration in the use from what was approved by the county and sold to lot and home purchasers in the Refuge. Purchasers were assured by sales staff that the golf course would be an enduring feature that was protected by Mojave County stipulations for floodplain and wildlife preservation. The 107 RV pads will bring transient occupants, increased density, traffic, noise, and crime to the neighborhood. The tent that has been erected is in direct violation of Refuge Community Design Guidelines causing emergency access issues, noise nuisance, and traffic. So far, Mr. Aldridge has not provided any provisions for security to protect our neighborhood from guests of the tent events. There has been an increase in complaints to the HOA and the Sheriff's Department from homeowners concerned about strangers wandering our neighborhood, extreme noise levels from the tent, lack of proper parking. I can only imagine what will happen to the security of our neighborhood with the addition of 107 motorhomes. The Refuge property owners have experienced a decrease in the value of our homes and lots due to the proposal of an RV park paving over the signature amenity of our community, the golf course. Why would Mojave County bend the rules, very good rules made intentionally for very good reasons, to accommodate this particular project? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Tom Graybill, and I live at the Refuge. I have well-documented evidence from public records that the proposed plan has already negatively impacted property values in the Refuge by 25 percent or more, and consequently has and will continue to cause the same reduction in property taxes paid to the county. Right now, the county is losing $235,418 per year in property tax revenue. If this RV plan is allowed to go forward, it will further impact values of existing properties and reduce future building activity. Now, we all know that real estate nationwide has been negatively impacted during the past several years, but by comparing similar neighborhoods in the same community, you can clearly see the effect of the proposed plan. Nationwide Homes built two tracts of homes in Desert Hills, one called Canterbury Estates and one inside the Refuge. Canterbury is also a gated, master-planned community but has no golf course. In 2007, the Refuge Nationwide Homes sold for approximately $130,000 more than the Canterbury Homes. In 2011, Canterbury Homes sold at an average price of $373,000, and in the Refuge at an average of $311,000. So we went from $130,000 premium to a $70,000 deficit. That's a $200,000 swing in value. Now, during the two-year period of '07-'08, prior to the introduction of changes at the Refuge Development, Refuge lots sold for an average price of $22 a square foot, Foothill Estates for $7, London Bridge Estates for $1,350. To put it in percentage terms, the Refuge lots sold at more than a 66 percent premium over the other two areas. Since the changes at the Refuge were announced during the period of '09 and 2011, Refuge lots went from $22 a square foot to $8 a square foot, down 66 percent. Although the other neighborhoods went down too, the Refuge lots went down by 50 percent more than either of the other two neighborhoods. Now, if you take the average decline in price of Refuge property in excess of the foothills and London Bridge and multiply it by the land area, the result is $13,174,000. And this is only based on the announcement of the intent to build the project. What happens when the RVs start rolling through the gates? What does this project wind up costing the county in reduced property taxes? Based on a decline in cash value of $13,174,000, the reduction in property taxes is $235,418 a year. Does the county really want to subsidize a project to the extent of a quarter million dollars a year? Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, sir.
My name is Linda Denovan, 2305 Demerit Drive. I work with Remax Prestige Properties in Lake Havasu. I am their number one agent and in the top 1 percent overall, having sold in excess of $12.5 million in residential sales in Mojave County in 2011. As a real estate professional, I'm concerned about properly representing home buyers. How can we be expected to sell a master-planned community when the premise on what is being built and sold can be completely changed after the purchase? How can we realistically be charged with selling a home within a gated, master-planned, champion golf course community when there are no assurances that what is promised within those gates through codes, covenants, and restrictions will not be changed without regard or consequences? Is that not bordering on real estate fraud? Speaking specifically to this community, I have had clients cancel the purchase of a home within the Refuge due to concerns about the RV plans, and I have had several clients specifically refuse to consider the Refuge for that same reason. My concern for the county centers on the recovery of the market and the revenue derived from that rise. How can we expect future development and growth if something like this is allowed? Why would anyone consider buying in a Mojave County subdivision ever again? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Ball?
Good morning. My name is John Ball. I live at 1946 Tradition Lane in the Refuge. I am the president of the Refuge Community Homeowners Association Board. The Refuge HOA Board is 100 percent dedicated to protecting our community from an unwelcome RV park. In October 2009, the applicant announced his plan to convert a portion of the golf course to an RV park. In the two and a half years since that announcement, the applicant has made many false and misleading statements to city and council, county officials, the local newspapers, and community business owners. Let's look at jobs. The applicant has greatly exaggerated the number of jobs that the proposed RV park would create. He says 77 jobs will be created to serve his 107 RV spaces. However, a survey taken last week of the six local Lake Havasu-area RV parks with a total of 1,467 spaces found that there are only a total of 37 employees working at those six parks. Let's look at the Arnold Palmer Signature designation for the golf course. The applicant has stated repeatedly that the Arnold Palmer Signature Golf Course status did not transfer when he bought the golf course, but that is false. Recent correspondence with the Arnold Palmer Company states that the Arnold Palmer Signature status did convey at no cost to the applicant. The golf course's haphazard reconfiguration has caused a suspension of the status, which can be reinstated when the golf course is restored. The applicant has promoted that the Audubon International Sanctuary designation for the golf course, and that is incorrect. Recent emails from Audubon clarified the Refuge application process is far from complete, and sanctuary status has not been given to the golf course. Audubon officials also had no knowledge of the applicant's intention for an RV park next to the Wildlife Refuge. The applicant has stated to the media that the golf course is a county asset and it is open to all, but Refuge homeowners who oppose the RV park and have been denied membership and access to the golf club. This has created one homeowner lawsuit, and more are sure to follow. On behalf of the Refuge Homeowners Association, please do not grant an RV park permit within the Refuge community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. My name is Richard Fransman. I live in Canterbury Estates, 3926 North Hillington Drive, Lake Havasu. In 2005, we bought a lot in the planned gated community of the Refuge. The original developer had used a typical marketing strategy to sell the golf club memberships to attract people to the central feature of the golf club facility, the Arnold Palmer designation. The size and the quality of the golf course at that time was the attractive feature to my wife and I's decision to purchase the property. We had other communities to consider, the Bullhead Community, out in California, there's a couple of communities over there that we were considering purchasing property. We chose Lake Havasu's Refuge because of the enormous golf course that it once had. The book here that I have is a book like this one. It contains binding agreements to both developer, club owner, and member and homeowner. In September of this year, the club's real property is to be turned over to the club members according to the exchange agreement herein. As investors, my family has over 80 years combined investments. The experience that we relied on the board and its expertise, but as taxpayers, we rely on you folks for your expertise. And Lake Havasu was considered the flagship of, the Refuge was considered the flagship of Lake Havasu, and values from the Refuge would uphold other values in the communities thereof. I'm opposed to the RV redevelopment, and I'd like for you folks to consider the not approving the redevelopment, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dick Miller?
My name is Dick Miller, and I am a Refuge Community HOA Board member, opposed to the RV park plan. My wife, Michelle, and I both retired law enforcement officers, Michelle with Long Beach Police Department for 30 years, and I served with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for 36 years. We bought in the Refuge in 2008 and completed construction in September of 2009, one month before the golf course changed ownership. Knowing the roads in the community were owned by the HOA, as stipulated by the plat map and county resolutions, we had little concern about the intentions of the new golf course owner, who is now the applicant for the RV park. Also knowing the nature of an easement, we knew any easement he might have over the roads for his golf course use were limited and would require HOA approval for any significant change to be made. In simple terms, we homeowners contractually extended the golf course owner an easement for the use of the roads as we allow. He is not legally allowed to expand that use, such as a golf course or sales office to the RV park without our agreement. The applicant is now, is, the applicant is not now, nor will he ever be allowed to use our roads for an RV park. He has no legal road access for this project. Because we won't grant permission for him to use our main road, Arnold Palmer Drive off of London Bridge Road, he plans to build a new road north of Arnold Palmer to access the north RV area, then bring the RVs south to cross Arnold Palmer. He also plans to use Arnold Palmer as an emergency service road. Neither of those things will happen without our approval, which he will not receive. He didn't, he did receive a temporary restraining order to use the roads in 2010 for the completion of a swimming pool, which has long been finished. The TRO can now be removed. The applicant also allegedly plans to cut through our community security wall as early as tomorrow to begin construction on the new road. This will be blocked and bring another lawsuit, and the tangle in court continues, but the fact remains, he has no legal access, and the county attorney has chosen to ignore that. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Ray Powell, Colonel, USMC, retired, and my wife and I live at 3537 Winterford Way in the Refuge. We've lived there since 2005, although we have owned property in Mojave County since 1972, and we have spent the last six or seven years developing a subdivision out in the Dutch Fletch area, which has water wells, airpark, and 96 lots. And so we have a little bit of experience with working with the county as well as Corps of Engineers and the FEMA about flood zones out in our area. And that's the subject of my talk today, is the flood zones in, in the Refuge. If you look at any of the maps, you can see that the flood zone starts right at the north gate, and it goes all the way south, and the drainage off of the Refuge itself also goes down through there. It all, it ends up down in the southern area of, of the, of the community. And it appears to us that the staff and the designer, developer of the previous developers in, did a great job of looking into this area because they chose to put a golf course in the flood area. And so, in the worst case, in the flood area, why, maybe a few golfers would be in danger, but otherwise, now we've decided to put 107 RV parks in that, RV in that same area. But yet, it looks like the staff has used the same criteria to approve the RV parks as they did approve the golf course. The golf course was a buffer from the wildlife zone and to the Refuge community, and, and the, there's a lot of questions that haven't been asked, asked or answered about the flood zone and the RVs in the flood zone. What happens whenever we have a 800-man theatrical tent with additional 200 to 400 cars in the same area? They've asked for gravel roads, and there's nothing more vulnerable than a gravel road in the flood area. And the, the access roads out of, out of the Refuge is primarily London Bridge Road. London Bridge Road is blocked to the south because of floods, and it's, and the lake rode out, and so, I guess I'm through. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dennis Schilling, former Lake Havasu City Councilman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. My name is Dennis Schilling. I reside at 2515 Angler Drive, Lake Havasu City. And as the Chairman pointed out, I'm a previous Lake Havasu City Council member. And at the end of the year 2010, I joined with the homeowners in the referendum process to bring forth a special election opposing the annexation of those fifty acres in the refuge. I bring that to your attention because some of the core issues that existed with the city now exist in front of the county. And a number of the speakers have already spoken relative to the pending litigation on the use of the roads and the devaluation in the property values that has occurred. And the, relative to your decision today, if you had approved this plan, construction would start, and virtually further destruction would be occurring in the property values out there. So, that's one thing needs to be considered. The other thing that's similar is the city was actually going out of pocket to provide additional general services and infrastructure. And that was, both of these issues were, again, the core to the overwhelming vote to oppose this, this annexation. The, we all want development to come here, but this particular development seems to be a, a development of a different animal, whereas the development could actually cost the county money. And I understand that the county is not spending any money relative to this plan. However, if the, if the property value devaluation is because of the development, you could end up actually receiving less tax revenues and supporting the development. So, it's, before the county can actually make an appropriate decision on this project, it needs to analyze both of these things, not only the property rights issues, but the financial impact to determine what the risk, what the liabilities and exposure to the county is. So the best outcome for the residents of the county would be that your decision would render no risk, no liability, and no exposure. These items all need to be shouldered by the developer. So, today, I really believe the best decision by the county is no decision. Thank you.
Chairman, could I inquire? Angler Drive is not in the refuge, is that correct?
That's correct. It's in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Supervisors and Mr. Chairman and Staff.
We have no one else signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion for discussion.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
And a second. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you. I do have a concern, and that is of public safety. Since they, they built Pavilion model and possibility going forth with this decision, has there been any kind of a traffic? I guess I would want to ask that, too.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can answer that question. Steve, you want to discuss the traffic issue? While, while-
Manager Walker, before we get too far, this is on the RV park, not the, not the other part, right? And not the tent?
No, sir. This is, we're talking about, if I understand Supervisor's question, he's concerned about old London Bridge Road and traffic on London Bridge Road, or what?
Well, I think I could get a little more specific. The two times that I've been by the property, evidently there have been some, some functions going on. Noticed a tremendous amount of vehicles that are on the property. Would the county entertain any liability? Have we done any, any study, or have we asked any of the fire department people in that area, the fire services? Are there adequate changes made by the proposal in order to cure?
Steve, I believe we did a, there was a traffic study. The fire department has signed off. Some other salient issues that we need to remember, this is not a homeowner association issue and an argument about homeowner issues, but it's a land use decision based on the county's land use rules. I, I personally have not heard anything that I don't think has already been through planning and zoning, through Development Services, that hasn't, wasn't discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I, I don't see any new issues here. Now, traffic is-
Hey, we can have Mr. Lautowski come down, because I'd like to go on the record, because that's a similar question I had, was traffic control over having RVs come in. You know, we need a turnout lane, we do not need a turnout lane, and obviously, if we do, then that would be burdened by the applicant. So I guess it's, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Lautowski.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell. With regard to the RV park proposal, I do understand that there's approximately a hundred and seven spaces proposed within the RV park, and Public Works staff and myself examined the proposal in the context of traffic operations and the impact to the operation of London Bridge Road, particularly at the points of exit and entry into the proposed RV park area. Assuming that, and this is based on some information provided by the applicant, as well as providing some, you know, a common sense approach towards analyzing the trip generation associated with this development, we would anticipate, and again, just for practical purposes, a more aggressive turnover of maybe a third of the RV spaces per day, meaning thirty-six entries and thirty-six exits of the RV park or the motorhomes, as well as one trip per day for just persons at the RV park wishing to exit the area and go into either Lake Havasu, or perhaps a shopping area, et cetera. So, what that boiled down to when we examined the trip generation was, we were anticipating a peak hour, at the highest peak hour of the day, of about fifteen entries and fifteen exits into the refuge for the purpose of utilizing the RV park. And when you're speaking of a peak hour trip generation of that limited level, just the average entry and exits during that peak hour would be four vehicles per minute. It's just not suggestive of a undue traffic impact to London Bridge Road. And I will point out, as you probably are aware, that Arnold Palmer Drive does have a left turn lane already that is sufficiently sized for an RV motorhome, that configuration.
Did that answer your question, Supervisor Watson?
Well, I'm pretty close. My main concern is if, if there were a large event at, say, the Pavilion, or there on the golf course, is there enough capacity for the emergency service vehicle to get in to address some occurrence, you know, a large windstorm, and these type of things? My concern is for the safety of the public.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, with regard to providing for emergency access and emergency access vehicle parking on site, I am aware that the Development Services Department did solicit input from the public safety agencies, and I would presume that sufficient emergency vehicle parking would be allocated on site in designated areas. And as I alluded to with my previous comments, where I do not expect an undue impact attributed to the RV park spaces, where we're seeing even in the peak hour, vehicles averaging maybe one every four minutes entry into the park, that there would not necessarily be an undue traffic congestion, et cetera, on London Bridge Road to prevent emergency access response times.
I guess the question I'd have in part be of Ms. Ballard would be that we send this plan out to the local jurisdiction, which would be Desert Hills Fire Department, and they have the ability to stop us from moving ahead if they feel there's not sufficient access for their emergency responding vehicles. Do we have the, or does this, this location have the approval of Desert Hills Fire Department?
Mr. Chairman, member of the, members of the board, the RV park plans are sent to the emergency, or to the local fire district. They do comment, depending upon the severity of the comments, you know, the commission and the board take those comments into consideration in making their decision.
Okay, but did Desert Hills Fire Department file any things saying that they believe they could not provide services to the-
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it would be useful to you, as well as to the, all the members of the public here, to have our Development Services Director kind of give you an overview of what, what has staff done. I mean, we're at, there are some specific issues here. I believe that, in my opinion, all of the relevant issues have been dealt with, they've been looked at in lieu of, of our policy procedures and standards. It is, should be crystal clear that staff believes we've done our due diligence and been extremely thorough in this, and staff's recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission was that we believe they have done, that the applicants have done everything we've asked them to do, they have handled every issue we asked them to do, and therefore staff has recommended both to Planning and Zoning, who voted unanimously, as well as to the board, that this should be approved.
Right. I don't know if the other, we have two-hundred-and-sixty-six pages of backup, so we, we pretty much have all the information. If anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chairman. Steve, is there any limitations on a part having RV parking in a flood, flood plain?
Mrs. Chairman, Supervisor Sockwell, I may defer-
You probably should ask, Nick, why don't you come on up?
Mr. Hunt, to the zoning-
Because I, I believe the flood plain issue has been clearly dealt with, and I believe he can straighten that one out, too.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Sockwell, the, I think the question is, what are the regulations for a flood plain, parking in a flood plain? And I, I want to emphasize that we staff, we can only look at our ordinances and regulations, and that's the only thing we can look at and enforce. And so, looking at our flood control ordinance, it clearly states that they can park recreational vehicles for up to a hundred and eighty days. And basically, the ordinance does not apply unless they have a vehicle that doesn't have a license plate, or they plan to leave it out over a hundred and eighty days, or they build a foundation for it, which is not the case here. This is not what they are applying for. So, there is no extra permit requirements, these are vehicles that can be driven away. I, I think that may answer your question.
Thank you.
Manager Walker?
Mr. Chairman, I heard a couple of other statements. One of one made by one of the testimonies was our destruction of the drainage plan. Nick, can you come, come back up? Would you like to address the, the drainage plan and, and the destruction of the drainage plan according to one of the testimonies?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Manager Walker, the question was that whether the county properly enforced the regulations. And when the property was developed at the very beginning, then there was a drainage report requirement according to county regulations. And that drainage report addressed the drainage. And we have received comments and emails whether, you know, Corps of Engineers needs to be involved, and, and they were involved. And they gave their input, and the development, the original development was in accordance with county regulations. And at that time, they developed a drainage plan, and the topography or grading of the site has not changed since then. So, the applicant, applicant's engineer provided an engineering opinion that since the topography and the conditions have not changed, the original drainage plan is still applicable. And we concur with that, with that opinion, because there is no changes there. If I may add on, on other flood control issues that one of the speaker commented on, on risk, that it's, the property, golf course property, most of it is currently in a flood plain. And flood plain is defined as where you have one percent probability in each year of, of certain flood risk. And in this property, it's in the flood plain, it's an AO2 zone, which would, would be a sheet flow. There is no, you know, wash or river flowing through there, but it would be a sheet flow. But I, I just want to mention that the county has engaged a consultant to do a new FEMA study for the north Lake Havasu area as a whole, and that study is just being completed. And according to that study, you know, this, that latest study is based on a lot more advanced data than the original FEMA designation was. And then it's based on the current topography, current development, and according to that study that is available, the flood risk will be reduced. It's actually, the area of the RV park will be taken out of the flood plain. It will be put in a five-hundred-year flood plain, which will require no mitigating measures whatsoever. Now, that study is not effective yet, so I want to emphasize that still currently, the current DEFIRM maps, FEMA maps are applicable. However, we are submitting that new study to FEMA, and, you know, based on the new technologies, and we're anticipating approval, whatever FEMA approves that. So, that will indicate a reduced flood risk.
Mr. Chairman, there was another issue that came up, that one of the speakers also said that Mojave County had made some type of a, a promise of an Arnold Palmer golf course, and that there would never be any changes to any golf course. And your review of all the documents, as well as in a deposition, I believe you set through, is there any, any truth to the, to that comment?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Manager Walker, like I said, this issue has been discussed several times, and we discussed with our county attorneys also, and we have been deposed in another lawsuit, and these questions came up many times. But the opinion was that the zoning of the property is proper. The zoning itself allows for recreational vehicle parking that property. And there, there was notes on the plan originally on Arnold Palmer Golf Course, but that's, the opinion was that it's not for the county to enforce, such as also the CCNRs, not for the county to enforce, and it could be other promises, but, but it wasn't, you know, we could only look at the proper zoning and available county ordinances to make our decision.
Mr. Chairman, there was another comment that, that concerns me about Mojave County bending the rules. What do you have to say about that, sir? Has Mojave County bent any rules for anybody in this situation?
Well, thank you very much for asking that question, and we are, we are very proud that we absolutely don't bend any rules, and we, we are very consistent, and we consider everybody's property right. That's, that's been our goal. And when questions such as this come up, we work very close with the county attorney to get a second opinion, to, and make sure we are in the right track.
So, from you as an engineer, Development Services Director, as, as well as Flood Control Director, do you see any issues that are unanswered, and that would give you any reservations about the recommendations staff has already made, that this should be approved?
No, sir. I, I don't have any reservations. Like I, I mentioned, I want to emphasize that we work under the county ordinances, and that's the only thing that we can enforce, that's the only thing we have authority to enforce. And we did according, everything according to the letter of those ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further questions.
Any other questions?
Any other questions by the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I, just a comment that I understand the refuge did not make it based on a, a single source income, such as selling residential lots. It didn't make it. And I can understand the applicant wanting to do multi-things on this, have multi-sources of income in order to make this a viable thing. I can understand where all of this is coming from. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve item 72.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the one.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same side, motion carries. We'll take a short break and let everybody clear the room, and then we'll start with the flood control, because we have some city people here who probably need to get back to work, except for the mayor. We will call the meeting back to order. We're going to jump ahead to item number 75 to find out everything Mayor Salem knows about water. So, I have a motion for discussion of item number 75.
Salem, move.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Do we have somebody from the city?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Greg Henry. I am the City Engineer for the City of Kingman. I want to thank you for moving this item up, but we do appreciate that, as well as your consideration in this matter. I do have a brief PowerPoint that I wanted to present to give an explanation and oversight of our projects. We have seven projects on our list. You may remember this first one from last year. I came up and talked about our, our sewers treatment plant, and the wash that's adjacent to the plant, and the channelization, and the box culvert that's going in as a necessary function of the project. We do still have some carryover of that project that's going to take place in the next few months. So, we are asking for some additional funding for that project. First off, I guess this is a city map showing the, the projects that are on our list. There's six there. The seventh is kind of one that kind of floats around and takes place at various locations for, for channelization and erosion protection of channels. Number one is our downtown wastewater plant. This is an overview showing the channel and the box culvert in the center of the picture. Most of that work has taken place. We do have some additional channelization that will be off to the left of the slide in the next coming months, as I've mentioned. Here's the close-up of the box culvert that was constructed last year with last year's allocation. Second on our, our list was Airfield Avenue. And we're talking, Airfield Avenue between Harrison Street and Andy Devine Avenue. There is a considerable amount of drainage that is piped under the railroad tracks in Andy Devine, and it concentrates in Airfield Avenue, where it makes its way to Harrison Street into the city's storm drain system. Airfield is currently a paved street with no curbs. And the idea behind the project would be to install some curbs to help contain and control the drainage and channel it west to Harrison Street. On the north side of Harrison, pardon me, on the north side of Airfield Avenue, there is a existing drainage berm. And the backyards that front Airfield are actually lower than the street. So, we feel this is an important project, which could prevent some flooding of those homes in the area there. Several years ago, the city received some, some flood money from Mojave County, and this is Airfield Avenue closer to Harrison Street. And we've constructed some curbs in the area already, as well as some storm drain. So, the idea would be this, this would be a continuation of a project that took place some time ago. Third on our list was Western Avenue. And we're talking about Western Avenue between Sycamore Avenue and, and Airway Avenue. And again, this is a street that's paved. There's some curbs already existing. And the idea behind this project would be to funnel the drainage towards Airway Avenue, where the city has a planned project to, to widen and improve Airway Avenue sometime in the, in the near future. And there would be a storm drain that would be extended back to Western Avenue that would intercept the drainage and take it further east to the Mojave Channel. Number four is our railroad channel. This is a multi-year, multi-phase joint city-county project. Last year, the Flood Control Department from Mojave County prepared, or caused to have, prepared a design concept report. We have been involved with, with, with that design concept, and, and our staff has agreed, and we are preparing and hoping to at least obtain some right of way that was identified in the design concept report with any allocation we received this year. But again, it is, it is a multi-year, multi-phase project. This is a picture that was taken just east of the railroad tracks, in between Eastern Street and, and the tracks, just south of the Airway Avenue underpass crossing the, the tracks. In the foreground, there's, there's a portion that hopefully can be seen. There's a, there's a concrete channel that was built with that underpass. And the railroad channel would take that project further north, further south. And what the idea would be to intercept flows that cross underneath, currently cross underneath the railroad tracks and create some drainage problems, as well as some flood zone issues for homes and businesses west of the tracks. Number five is the Bull Mountain Drainage Channel, which has been identified in our Kingman Area Master Drainage Plan. This project would intercept flows that originate in the Bull Mountain area and cross Stockton Hill, and create some problems for, for, for roads and homes east of Stockton Hill. The idea is the channel would concentrate the water and direct it to the Mojave Channel, which of course is the main outlet of drainage in the, in the North Kingman area. This is a photo south of Gordon Drive of the Bull Mountain Channel that, there's currently just some riprap. And the idea would be to channelize that and improve this channel. Number six on our list was Detroit Avenue between Eastern Street and Stewart Street. There's, it's currently unpaved, and there's, even after a minor storm, there's, there's some drainage that puddles up in the road. And the idea would be to some, some grading and, and some pavement to, to better facilitate that drainage. Seventh on our list was miscellaneous erosion protection at, depending on how the monsoons come this summer, the, the need can change and arise that we don't necessarily know where that is. But this is one picture of, of one area where we think some erosion protection would help. This is south of Airway Avenue between Yavapai Street and Diamond. And a portion of that channel is improved, and the idea would be to improve with some rock, some grotted rock, or some shockcrete to, to improve that. Again, this, this is just back to our list. This should be identical to the Exhibit A that's in the, in the proposed resolution. Our allocation was about 509,000. And as you can see, we've, we've got considerably more projects available than, than, than funding. These, of course, are just estimates at this time, and it's hope that as bids come in, we may be able to get three or four, half of these done this coming year. With that, I will address any questions the board may have.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No questions? If we can, what I'd like to do is hear from all, all four cities, and then, then we'll come back and do the, all four projects. So, I'll just table item 75, and I need a motion on 76 to hear from City of Bullhead. Have a motion for that?
I have a second.
Motion and a second.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and County Supervisors and staff. I'm here to present Bullhead City's list of projects and give you a few examples of projects done during the current year, and a few more that are on our list. Some of the past projects, last year, you saw some slides on Fox Wash. We did a couple of phases of Chaparral Wash Project, and I showed some pictures last year. That project is tied to Havasupai Wash, and we have another phase of Havasupai Wash that we would need to work on, and we'll go further into that. Bullhead Park with drainage improvements, again, I shared that last year. Bullhead Park with drainage improvements, again, I shared that last year. Community Park Parking Lot Replacement was another project we looked at last year. Additionally, each year, we get our share of storms. And storm responses is a big part of what we do. This year, we did some repairs on Vorano Drive. We did some maintenance work on Desert Fiddles Estates, North and South Channels, working with the county flood control staff. And we also did the Hancock River Front Outfall as part of our responses. Our list, as with other cities, is fairly large. This is what it looks like right now. Montana Wash Levy Improvements, that's one of our big projects right now. It's top of our list. We also got CDBG grant for about $500,000 for that project. The total estimate is $1.7 million. We talked about this project last year. Since then, we have completed the design, applied for the 404 permit, and procured about three-quarters of the right-of-way needed for that project. River Springs Wash, Arcadia Boulevard Basin, we haven't really done any design work on it. It's something that would be taken on in the next year or two. Gold Rush Road Box Culvert and Road Improvements. Part of it is tied to the Montana Wash Improvement Project and the CDBG grant and the flood control money used for the rest of that project. Havasupai Wash Sedimentation Basin, that's really Phase Three of our Chaparral Havasupai Wash Project. We did the first two phases last year. Silver Creek Slope Stabilization was another project that came up last year, and we talked about it. Since then, we have done the preliminary design, final design. We have procured the right-of-way, and we are basically ready to start construction. Country Club Drive Flooding, we haven't really started to work on it. Avenida Del Sol Flooding, same thing. Kyle Drive, Rio Lomas Flooding, we have made some progress. We did the design. We are working with BLM on the environmental assessment. Once that is approved and done, we would be able to start the Kyle Avenue project. North Oatman and Riverview is in very preliminary stages. We have entered into an IGA with ADOT since we are using WACOG funds for the street portion and the flood control funds for the flood control-related work. But we are at very preliminary stages of starting the design on that project. The actual construction is probably a couple of years out. Buena Vista Flooding is another future project that we would take. And Montana Wash at Palma is another future project as a Section 12, as is various washes in Section 12. Moving on to just show you a few pictures on these projects. Montana Wash, you saw it last year a little bit, but now we are getting very close to construction. Arcadia Boulevard is a new one. Gold Rush, as I just discussed, we have three-quarters of the right-of-way. Design is complete. 404 permit should come fairly soon, and we'll be in construction mode on that. This is the Havasupai, which is the third phase of the Chaparral Havasupai where we are still picking quite a bit of sediment. We have dealt with the peak flow. But once this third phase is done, the sediment will be addressed. And a lot of that is our maintenance activity also until we get the work done. Silver Creek Stabilization, you may remember from last year. Again, design is done, right-of-way is in place. And we are ready to proceed with construction now. It should happen this year. Some more pictures from Silver Creek. Country Club Drive, this is a future project, just localized flooding. We would take care of that. This is another localized project for future. Kyle, as I was discussing, we have made progress. We have a design and an environmental assessment nearly complete by BLM, which will allow us the right-of-way needed. Some of the past projects that we recently completed, Mojave Drive was a new project we did this year. We did the entire street using her funds. And we have some culverts that I'll show that we use flood control funds for. There were two or three locations that the Mojave Drive was getting washed out. So, we elevated the road and put culverts under it. Fox Wash is a relatively older project now. Two years ago, we did this project. Since then, we got all the maps amended, and several properties are outside the flood plain. This is another example of maintenance activities that was previously needed. But the Phase One and Two took care of a lot of the problems along Chaparral. This is one more slide from that Chaparral Wash Phase Two where we built a channel on the golf course and built a carriageway path in it. Bullhead Parkway, we continue to do drainage improvements on, a lot of inlets in the median. This was an older project where we had significant erosion. We redid that upwash and paved the channel. North Oatman is another previous project where we dealt with all the stormwater crossings using flood control funds, and the road was again built with her funds. These are some of the recent storm responses. Again, Chaparral and Havasupai is a big area. And we want to do the Havasupai Wash dealing with the sediment. This is a location in Buena Vista where just about every street flows down with quite a bit of sediment and water. And that would be one of our future projects. But right now, all we are doing is storm response in that area. It's kind of hard to see, but middle of that picture is a road full of sediment in Buena Vista. That would be again a future project. All along Parkway, after every storm, we do quite a bit of cleanup on the shoulders. This was another localized flood control project, a small wash through a private property. We ended up building a small channel for them. Another local project where we did some slope stabilization. This was done previous year, Yale Drive Outfall. This is another example of maintenance work that we work together with the county staff. At Secret Pass, we do some maintenance work every year. Williams Wash, another one we worked with the county on. Desert Fiddles was a very recent one. Within the last month or two, we worked on the maintenance of washes and desert fiddles with the county. Another example where we cleaned up the channel and stabilized slopes. That's kind of an overview of some of our recent stormwater response, some of the recent projects and the projects on our backlog list that we still have to work on. With that, if you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
The one, which projects you said were designs all done, everything's ready for construction?
Silver Creek Wash Stabilization is completely ready for construction. So is, let me pull my list.
Montana?
Montana is done. We are just waiting for the 404 permit.
Okay.
It should come any day, and there is one.
Yeah, I didn't want to use shovel-ready, Mr. Chairman. I said, I think.
Right, yeah, several of these are shovel-ready. So, Montana is shovel-ready, Havasupai is ready, and Silver Creek is ready. All three are ready in addition to localized work. North Oatman and Riverview is several months out, probably close to a year out.
Thank you.
Okay, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for discussion, item number 77?
Motion for discussion on 77?
Second.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Greg Froslie, and I'm the City Engineer for Lake Havasu City. I guess what I'd like to do to start today is review some of the projects that we've accomplished with the previous IGA. What you see here is what we accomplished over the last fiscal years. It was just over $4 million. It's a little bit higher than typical, and that's because we got, we finally got started on some of the larger projects that we carried from the previous year. All four of these projects that are listed are at-grade wash crossings. They're important to note relating to safety and emergency services. All of these culvert crossings were designed to carry a 100-year event. And prior to the installation, when flowing full, there were certain areas of town that were not accessible by emergency services, and they are now today. So, that's good. Moving on to the projects we're proposing with the agenda item today. The highest priority we gave to the Mockingbird Wash. This is part of our annual wash bank stabilization program. This project has been designed already, and it's currently under review by the Army Corps of Engineers for a construction permit. You can see what the issues are with these pictures. You can see very heavy cutting, that's about a 20-foot drop. Not only is it putting the power line that you see there in danger, it's also starting to encroach on private property, which is obviously a big concern. So, this, again, is part of our annual wash bank stabilization. We're going to go in there and reestablish the bank and reestablish that private property as well. This situation exists in numerous places all over town. Next on our list was the Jamaica Boulevard Culvert Improvements. This actually consists of the installation of two culvert projects similar to the four we did last year. When these two particular washes are flowing full, it does isolate certain areas of town, impeding the ability of our emergency services to reach them should something happen during a heavy rain. This is also Jamaica Boulevard. It's functionally classified as an arterial roadway which carries heavy traffic. And we really need to culvert these so they can, everybody can access those areas of town during a rainstorm. Again, with our wash bank stabilization program, I'll show you a slide later on that shows that we have issues similar to the Mockingbird Wash throughout town. Again, this area in particular is, they have a Supai Wash. Again, there's a power line situation that could be in danger. And it's also starting to encroach onto private property. So, we need to reestablish that bank as well as many others throughout town. It's important to remember that these washes were man-made approximately 40 years ago and have literally received zero maintenance on them throughout the years. So, it's really starting to show now, and we really need to give them some attention. This, next on our list is the roadway drainage improvement. And this is actually new this year. Every time Lake Havasu City gets a monitor, a heavy rain, you can see what happens on that top picture where the edge of the roadway gets completely washed out. And the city spends hundreds of thousands of dollars each year in overtime for maintenance crews to go out there and clear the roads to make them passable and also reestablish the roadway edges. What we thought we'd do to combat that is take the lead from some of our residents. What they have done already, you can see in the bottom two pictures, is they've taken upon themselves to fortify the edges of the roadway. And it seems to have worked really well in very isolated areas when those folks take it upon themselves. That is out in public right-of-way.
Greg, is that Pallaverty North?
I couldn't tell you where that picture was taken. Sorry. But, so, we've done some cost estimates. We can do something like this relatively cheap. And hopefully, we can minimize sending our maintenance crews out there to clean up those types of messes, especially during a moderate storm. We did present that to the Public Works Advisory Board locally, and they were quite excited about it. And we've moved forward at the staff level to develop details for the various situations throughout town. So, this, provided that there's available funding, we can move forward with this project very quickly. Another program that we'd like to get started on is a residential drainage program. Given the topography in Lake Havasu City, most, many if not most of the residential properties have rear and side yard drainage easements. Unfortunately, not all of them function as intended. The drainage program is lower on our priority list. However, if you live in this house, you might disagree with our assessment of that. This is a picture of a drainage easement that's not functioning, and it's flooding out an individual's backyard. And you can see the flow coming out the front there. I think I've got a few more pictures. So, the staff engineers are working right now, this particular one is under the IGA with last year's contract for the flood control allocation. Staff engineers are currently working with the homeowner to find a mutually agreed-upon solution to this problem here. Here's another example of uncontrolled side yard easement. This homeowner took it upon himself to construct a wall to try to protect his home, which works for the length of the wall. And then the front part of his house does get flooded. Apparently, my summary sheet didn't get in here. But this, back in 2007, we did take a portion of our flood control allocation and commissioned a drainage master plan. The result of that master plan was approximately $50 million worth of drainage projects that we need to, or we have been working on and need to continue working on. Part of those projects identified, this is also right out of the master plan. The dark blue lines indicate our washes. The light blue lines indicate wash bank stabilization projects that they identified. So, that's why that was rated the highest, because we are dealing with private property issues and some utility issues as well. So, that's all the slides I have. I can tell you that the Exhibit A that we submitted to the county is rather aggressive. The totals are just about $4.4 million, which is similar to the work we did last year. So, with the reduced allocation, this definitely poses a challenge to Lake Havasu City. But again, we've got decades' worth of drainage work ahead of us, and we'll do as much as we can. Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Motion to discuss item number 78?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Do we have somebody from Colorado City here?
Say anyone.
I did have a couple of people sign up for 75 and 77. Mr. Greg Henry's in support. Would you like to address this or just have it put on the record if you're still here? No?
Nothing further to add.
All right. I guess Greg's taking care of it. All right, well, Manager Walker, do you have any?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you have in your packet. There were some questions relative to the amount of money that was going to be collected or what we projected to be collected this year. Nick, if you've got, can you come up and talk about a little bit of the financials? And then I have some follow-up comments. I want everyone to understand the amount of money has gone down and why it's gone down. So, Nick can deal with that, Nick, if you would, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Manager Walker. The monies went down for two reasons. First one is the assessments countywide went down substantially. And I have a table in front of me, and I can go through the cities. From last year, for example, just due to the assessment, Bullhead City was getting $1.16 million. And this year, it would be $1.09. Lake Havasu City last year would be 2.1. And this year, it's 2.08. And Kingman, 717. I'm sorry.
Yeah, those numbers, Nick, don't match the ones that are in the, I think it's even less.
The other reason that the county The other, the other reason that the county, being in, in hard financial situations, we lost flood control money to, to other purposes. And last year, we, Flood Control District absorbed all those costs and gave the city their share as, according to the formula that we had. And this year, the one point three million dollars was distributed among the cities to deduct in addition to that, so they take their share of the, of the bad economic situation. So according to that, this year Bullhead City would get seven hundred seventeen thousand, Lake Havasu one point one million three fifty-nine, Kingman five hundred nine thousand and Colorado City sixteen thousand dollars. I don't know if you want me to go through how, how the flood control tax is collected or?
Well, I think, I think certainly the board knows that, that they are the, the flood control board. They make the assessment, they set the levy rates and they collect and distribute the, the money. Because there had been some questions, was the county, were, were the allocations down because the county was going to put money into county projects? And I wanted to answer that is, the answer to that was, was no. It was down based on valuations. So I don't, unless you have any more questions for Nick?
Board members have any questions?
Thanks, Nick. Mr. Chairman, first I want to recognize Mayor Salem. Thank you for being here, sir. I also would, would like to compliment the presentations. I'm, I'm absolutely clear that we have an outstanding flood control district here and outstanding flood control people working on it. Having said that, now I'm going to feel a little bit like Mr. Scrooge and, and I'm going to have to put something on the table from a financial standpoint for the board's consideration. As you know, we're in the midst of our budget hearings. From last year to this year, we are looking at over two million dollars just to try to match the level of services we provided last year. We have been taking a close look right now. We, we've been through the criminal, going through the criminal justice system, we've been through the courts. Criminal justice system, we have done our very best because we're the only person who really provides criminal justice services to, to try to keep, hold, hold those services as whole as possible. And it's not going to be possible to do that this year. We simply don't have enough of those outside the criminal justice system to, to keep the criminal justice system whole. They're fifty-four percent, I believe, John, of, of the general fund. We've been through the, the courts, justice courts, Superior Court, clerk of the courts, county attorney. We still have remaining to go through, the sheriff's needs, the jail, PDO, LDO, they still remain. As you're aware, this year, the legislature has given the county authority to sweep funds and I can tell you, as we go through the budget, we will be bringing to the board some recommendations for fund sweeps. I, I think it would be necessary for us to, to look into the future and consider that next year flood control funds are going to be distributed probably in five ways. Kingman is split through the middle, so giving directly just to the city of Kingman is going to, going to be a split between five districts. The same thing in Lake Havasu City. Bullhead City will, will remain intact. So flood control issues are, are going to be significantly different next year unless there are some change in the economy or, or the valuations or the levy rate, we're still looking at the decreases. Also with five supervisors, we're going to have to decide, or the board will have to decide in January of next year, most likely, exactly how a new board wants to outfit the five supervisors, provide spaces, vehicles, employees, et cetera, et cetera. That's not yet worked out. So despite the fact that everything I hear presented here i, is something that certainly should be done, I guess that the question would be, is it, is it appropriate to distribute these funds right now in the midst of our budget cycle? So my recommendation for your consideration is until the board has had the opportunity to evaluate the impacts of this year's budget and to look at the alternatives to try to maintain services, I regretfully recommend that we table these flood control projects until you've had the opportunity to take a look at the whole picture as, as it plays out over the next few months. We're not going to be doing anything with any of these monies until it comes to the budget and would be considered by the board. So I, I realize they've done a great job in putting these things together and they're all necessary, but as, as, as a manager, I would like for you to see the whole impacts to the county before we distribute these funds. And after, if you make the decision to not have any effect on them, then we, we can bring it back to the board as part of the budget process.
Any questions by board members? Question I would have, when do you expect to have that information to us where we could make a decision to come back?
Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll be bringing the tentative budget on June, June eighteenth?
Actually, July fourteenth.
July, excuse me, yeah. That, that'd be the first opportunity for you to see the whole picture of this and then decide if you're going to take action relative to what's going to happen in, in, in January of next year, which would be a mid-year review when the new board seats. So that, that would be something, we can, we will have the, the tentative budget prepared for you with, with recommendations about what we'd like to do by then.
In July?
Yes, sir.
What is the pleasure of the board? I'd like to make a comment. Just like to thank each and every one of the cities that are here making presentations today and tell you the, the importance of your folks coming down to give us these presentations. It gives us a real firsthand view of the criteria that you go through, the importance of those projects to you. It also gives us the ability to talk to our constituents on, on what all the cities are doing and where those monies go. So from my point of view, from, I just want, like to say thank you very much, those were very fine ex today, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to echo that. I thank you everyone for coming out today. I, I, I'm very sorry that you, you probably will not be going home with your pockets full of money, but, but hang in and we're going to do the best we possibly can because we all realize how important it is to have good flood controls facilities and be able to maintain them.
What is the pleasure of the board? Would you like, let's ask, Assistant County Attorney, can we take seventy-five through seventy-eight in one motion or do you need to do each one individual? One motion, okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
I've got a question.
Pleasure.
Is there a possibility of funding at least a portion of these projects now and then funding possibly the rest in July?
I don't know, I, I, we could probably do anything we want to do. Either we wait till we get the numbers or we don't, I guess, just whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know what criteria you, you would use to do that because you don't, you're, we don't yet have the budget done to tell you what the impacts are. In July, when we let you know and you decide what your trade-offs are relative to flood control versus criminal justice system, et cetera, we, we certainly would, would be able to entertain their, particularly look at their shovel-ready quote-unquote projects. And then you'd have to make, make a decision relative to how much you want to put into that and, and do you want to take some to make the criminal justice system whole? That, that would be the decision would be before you.
We, we could see how that works by funding Mr. Diddy and then the other cities should come back, I guess. So what is the pleasure of the board? Die for lack of a motion.
I would, my, my motion on that would be to, if we're looking at shovel-ready, possibly at our next meeting, the different cities could bring forth their estimates on what their shovel-ready projects are going to cost and that we could look at funding that and holding the rest of it until after our tentative budget is set.
I guess the question I would have then would be, should this be tabled and then what, if you're going to do that, have to come back to, through the staff to get, because we don't know what, everybody gave us their top list of what they had. I don't know anybody's ready today, we'd have to bring them back.
Mr. Chairman, I think flood control could work with, with each of the cities to pare it down to their absolute top priorities, those that, for which they've already invested money, that they've done the design, they've done that sort of stuff and they're ready to award. And then we, we could have that a, and on the table in front of the board to decide
Next month?
If you want, yes, in July.
Table it, table it and then bring it back when they have.
Yeah, because I can't give you a whole picture
Right.
of, of what's going to, to take place until I've got it all done and staff's had a chance to work it all out.
So I think the, with the appropriate thing is, Mr. Exstrom would be just to table it in that way that the flood control folks can meet with, with our staff and then bring it back when they're ready.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Would that be okay with the rest of the board members?
That's, that's, yeah.
And have a motion for that then?
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Back in order. Item number seventy-three is a public hearing, adoption board supervisor's resolution twenty twelve dash zero seven one zoning use permit. This is for electric distribution substation. I will open the public hearing. And this is item number seventy-three. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone here who would like to address this issue? See no one, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board? This is the commission recommended unanimous.
I'll make a motion, would it be approved seventy-four A?
Second the motion. All right, seventy, seventy-three is for approval. Have no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number seventy-four A is a public hearing on the community development block grant funding projects. I will open the public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak on this issue. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board regarding this? All right, I will close the public hearing. I will now go to item number seventy-four B is discussion possible action adoption board supervisor's resolution twenty twelve dash seventy-two, authorizing the submission of applications for twenty twelve state community development block grant funds, regional account four hundred and thirty-one dollars, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and the state special project amount of three hundred, account three hundred thousand dollars. Move for adoption. Do we have a motion for adoption? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you pull the same sign, motion carries. Item number seventy-nine, discussion possible action approval of transfer of fifteen hundred and fifty dollars to Serbat precinct constable budget for reimbursement of mileage for the remainder of FY eleven twelve. Do we have a motion for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second the motion. Motion and a second on discussion. Finance Director, Mr. Timko, do you have information to go over on this?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just, just to point out that our, our recommendation in this board item has been based on the, the need for all of our department heads, including elected officials, to live within their budget. I'd like to point out to the board, in particular, our concern with the, with the constables' budgets. And that is that the, the five constables that are employed in, in Mojave County, over the past three years, in total, these five constables over the three years have generated one hundred thousand eight hundred four dollars in revenue. During that same period, their expenses were one million eighty-eight thousand dollars six hundred sixty-four, or a net expense of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty. During the past five years, the specific constable in question has had revenues decreased by forty-three point five percent, while her travel budget decreased sixteen percent. By comparison, her, her next-door neighbor, the Kingman Constable, had revenues increased thirty-seven point five percent, while his travel decreased thirty-three percent. And so I, it's not a question of, of our responsibility to cover the legitimate cost of the constable in performing their duties. It's, it's just to point out that we would expect that these constables be as efficient as possible and to plan their business in a way that'll allow them to operate within the budget that the board supervisors has approved of them. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, Mr. Timko. Ms. Jean Bishop, Constable Bishop, you signed up. Did you want to address the board? You've got a motion to approve now, so don't, don't change that.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, supervisors. I just wanted to thank you for making the motion to approve. I do appreciate it. Nothing's changed since April the second, although I have kept my mileage down, but as a result of that, my revenue's gone down. So I'm, I'm trying to keep Mr. Timko happy by keeping expenses down, but as you can see by the map that, that I provided, my area is huge and I can't always control where the services are going to be needed, whether it's Mead View, Dolan Springs, but I, I try to be fiscally responsible and I appreciate the budget and stand for any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Phyllis Anderson also signed up. Does Mrs. Phyllis, would you like to address the board, ma'am?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and supervisors. My name is Phyllis Anderson. I live at six four nine eight Chloride Road. Technically, it's Golden Valley, but actually, it's just above Grasshopper Junction. I'm in favor of reimbursing our constable for the Serbat precinct for the mileage for the remainder of our fiscal year. I've known our constable for over twenty-five years. I know she is honest and faithful to her duties as constable, even if she is personal friends with recipients of her papers. I see an expedition in the parking lot with official use-only plates on it. Possibly this could be traded for a more economical vehicle in order for Constable Bishop to properly execute her duties. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Think, think that helped, Jean? We have a motion and a second before the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motioned, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, we've got the motion.
We've got a motion and a second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number eighty, I would make a motion for discussion. Now the second for the discussion?
Second.
All right. I placed this on, everybody's familiar with the Arizona-Utah, both of you have been involved in that, trying to formalize a agreement so that it's more legally binding. So this is just to kind of formalize that when things get together. So that's basically, and you have the backup on it, there's nothing else to go with it, so. Do we have a motion for? I'll make a motion for the adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We are and we stand adjourned. Thank you.